Vermillion City Council Meeting Scheduled For Monday, April 7th, 2025 At 6:00 PM Will Come To Order. Can you please call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Januine, Helwig, Cheeseman, Murrah, Mayor Cole.
Here. Would please stand for the Pledge Of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Catherine, I want to say welcome back and thank you for leading us in that. We're kind of lost last time.
Was it a train wreck?
Does anyone have a chance to review the minutes from March 17th, 2025 Special Meeting and the March 17th, 2025, the regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve. I didn't see anything.
Motion to approve by Counselor Holland. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Murrah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next would be adopted to the agenda. Does anyone have a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes or a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt by Counselor Januine. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Price. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Agenda is adopted. For visitors to be heard, for persons addressing the council, please use the microphone at the podium and raise your hand to be recognized and please state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard for five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For the agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item and after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic given to the governing body for discussion. At that point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless the council member moves to allow a person to speak and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions, however, by council members may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Do we have any items? I know we have a proclamation on the agenda, but do we also have any other visitors to be heard at this time? Do we have somebody from the child protection team that wants to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Cole and City Council. It's my pleasure to be here today. My name is Aaron Armstrong and I am the President of Clay County's Child Protection Team. And I have a proclamation to read today concerning April being designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month. So proclamation recognizing April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas in February of 2025, CASA, which stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, assisted 24 children in our regional area who were the victims of abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the state of South Dakota and the United States. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas child abuse, whereas protective factors and conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and development well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnership created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social, emotional, and well-being of children and families in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. And whereas the downtown Main Street accent lights will be blue for one week from April 7th, 2025 through April 11th, 2025, to promote awareness and the importance of child abuse prevention. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the members of Clay County Child Protection Team, do hereby declare April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Vermillion and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children's and families. Dated Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of April, 2025, on behalf of the Clay County Child Protection Team by their President, Aaron Armstrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Are there any other visitors to be heard on items not on the agenda? Okay, I do have a proclamation here recognizing April 6th through 12th for National Library Week. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, techno- technology and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and initiative programs ensuring that all individuals, regardless of backgrounds, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEM programs, literacy initiatives, and fostering curiosity and love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries protect the end, the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, creativity for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joined together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Down To The Library," or "Drawn To The Library," I'm sorry. Read that incorrectly. Now therefore be resolved that we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Library Week. And in the city of Vermillion, during the week, we encourage all residents to visit the Edith B. Seagris, did I say that right? Seagris Vermillion Public Library to explore its resources and celebrate all the ways that the library draws this community together. Dated this day, 7th of April, 2025. Dan, if you want to come up and take this?
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and the City Council. I guess I would just say real quick, thank you for recognizing National Library Week and for all the support the city provides for our public library, for community members. I would just emphasize what a great resource our library is for the community. You know, we're open seven days a week. We have access to Wi-Fi. Our library offers a variety of materials for checkout. We have regular programs, activities for all ages, birth through seniors, meeting rooms, computers, printing, copying, scanning, faxing, and much more. I'd encourage everyone to check out our newsletter or website and have a look at what's going on. I'm sure you'll find something that's of interest to you. And remember, if you don't have a library card, it's easy to get one. Community members who live in Clay County can just bring an ID and proof of address and get signed up in a few minutes and you'll be ready to go. But just in general, thank you for recognizing National Library Week and we hope community members take the opportunity to use our library. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to note they have seeds and I know it's this time of year to plant, so.
Yes, our seed library is going. We had a great presentation by the Missouri Valley Gardeners Group just recently. So if you've got questions or need seeds, we've got a variety of stuff for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, moving on. Next item, we have a public hearing for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Athletic Boosters Club. Nick?
The Vermillion Booster Club has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license at the Vermillion High School Gymnasium on Saturday, April 26th, 2025. Vermillion High School is located at 1001 East Main Street. The notice for the public hearing and the police chief's memo are attached. The police chief's report states that there have been no alcohol-related violations with this event in the past. A check of the Vermillion Police Department's records revealed no alcohol-related violations and there are no felony convictions in South Dakota in reference to the applicants for this license. The police chief spoke with Andy Meredith, the President of the Vermillion Booster Club, and discussed safety measures that will be in place to help mitigate any problems. The city has received the $30 per day licensing fee and the $20 advertising fee from the applicant for a total of $50. And administration recommends approval of this special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Athletic Booster Club Hall of Fame banquet on April 26th, 2025 at the Vermillion High School Gymnasium unless additional information is provided at the public hearing.
Thank you. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Just want to clarify, this, I'm assuming the school board would have to approve this being alcohol and?
Yes, they approved it at their, the first meeting in March.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they've already said yes before we do. Any other discussion? Any motions? I'm sorry. Motion to approve by Counselor Lieber. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Holland. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, we go into old business. We have a hangar lease agreement with Mr. Tim Schramm.
Thank you. So this item was considered at the March 17th meeting. After discussion, the council postponed the item to today's meeting. This would allow staff time to review what other communities or airports in the state were charging as far as their rates. There will be, later in the agenda, there is an item to be considered by the council where we will be discussing the rates, I guess. This agreement in particular is for the tea hanger located at this location by the, marked out by the red square. It's, this is South Dakota Street, the entrance to the airport. And here's all the available hangers and that's the one Mr. Schramm owns currently. The lease agreement is with Mr. Schramm will be very typical for the new hangar leases that we have at the airport. It dictates what the lease of the, the term of the lease is going to be, what the rates are going to be. If the rates are going to be increased, there's a statement in there as far as what it's going to be capped at. And then there's also a statement as far as when the lease payments are going to be made. Based on the size of the parcel being leased and our existing rates of 10 cents per square foot for unused land and 5 cents per square foot for land covered by a hanger, the yearly rent will be $183.06. This will be an increase of $138.36 per year. Staff recommends that the city council allow the mayor to sign the hangar lease agreement with Mr. Tim Schramm as originally proposed by staff. The agreement presented has already been signed by Mr. Schramm. Although the city council can propose a new rate, this would also need to be agreed to by, by Mr. Schramm. This is a peculiar situation since Mr. Schramm already owns the hanger. Changing the rate at this point could also be viewed negatively by Mr. Schramm since the rate was already offered.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. I know we're discussing the rate later in the agenda. This is just reference to the current lease that's not in effect. Yep. Counselor Holland, you have a question?
Jose, it applies somewhat to this one, perhaps the next thing we have about rates too, but if we get that graph back, is, the way we do it, is that?
As it comes up, yeah.
Does he have any quote undeveloped land?
He does. If, there it is. So right now, this area here is what he has developed. It's a tea hanger and it's quite literally in the shape of a tea. So he has other space here that's, that's not developed at this time.
So the interpretation that is really, if it's not building, you're taxed at?
Your, yeah, your, your fee is higher for that unused space, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just to clarify in this lease, nothing's, nothing's changed, so if I remember and look at this, it's a 10-year fixed payment schedule and then with an option of 30 years, is that accurate how this is worded?
Yep, if everything works out the way the lease is supposed to be, at the end of the day, he would be able to have this lease for 30 years. So it's, it's, the original, the first is 10 years and then two 10-year renewals that would be allowed. And then the council would be able to, after the first tenure, the council could actually increase the lease up to 10 cents per square foot total.
In, in 10 years?
Yep, total. The total increase would be 10, 10 cents. Yep.
Okay. And I know on the one that we're coming up on, we're going to discuss that and then they'll probably, the proposal is to shrink that timeframe down. Is that accurate?
No, the proposal is just for the, for the lease fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion by council? I guess my, my one thing I would like to see, and I know that in the one that's upcoming, you're, you're looking at increasing the rent, correct?
Yeah.
I guess my only thing is that I agree, we're potentially, we put the cart from the horse in this one, told them the, what it was going to be for the amount and I agree we should honor that. I just, my only thought process is, is in 10 years, if we're looking at adjusting that, are we now still in the right amount? Does that make sense? Because the last time this was adjusted was 10 years ago, correct?
Yeah, 2012.
So in 10 years, when his renewal comes up again?
So in 10 years, then the renewal then would be, and it's stated here in the agreement, in 10 years, sorry, in 10 years, he's, he's essentially going to be capped up 10 cents per square foot. So he's not going to have the, the, the split between the unused land and the used land. It's just going to be flat out 10 cents per square foot.
I guess my only concern is, I'm not so worried about the, the amount as I am maybe the length. 10 years from now, are we still in that, that realm? But I realize there's also other people in other spaces that are going to be coming up. Do we win the, do we know when the next lease is going to be coming up for renewal, approximately?
We do, I don't have it right in front of me, but we do have a spreadsheet with all of these dates. I want to say that the next renewal is probably going to be within three, three to five years if I remember correctly.
Any other discussion? Counselor Januine?
So remind me, what was the total rate that he had agreed to? And I think this is.
Yeah, if I recall, I remember initially, we didn't even know he bought it.
Yeah, initially, yep.
But he, he, what, was he signing?
So if he were to sign the lease agreement that, that we're considering today, he had agreed to $183.06. Right now, without this agreement, what he had already paid was $45 or so, give or take. So there's going to be an increase, yeah, of $138. And he's okay with that. He's okay with this increase. He's just, if we were to change the agreement that he had already reviewed to whatever the rate may be, then that would be a new rate for him. He's just unaware of that, what that would be.
Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does. I think, yes.
Is he, is he paying this on top of the 45 he already paid back in November?
Yep, so he already paid the $45 and then once this is signed, then he's going to be paying the difference.
The difference?
Yep.
Okay. And that's good for 10 years?
Correct. Well, he pays that every year. But that rate is for 10 years, yep.
Correct. Counselor Cheeseman?
So am I to assume then that, that what's in front of us now is going to remain his rate and what we're going to be voting on later is going to be for people who are coming in the future?
Correct.
Okay, that clears it out. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Januine?
One more question. So at the end of 10 years, he can choose whether or not to renew? Can we adjust the rate at that point or is this?
No, we can adjust it. It's just, there's a cap to that adjustment.
Section two, Jose. I guess my only thing is I thought we were doing the rate resolution prior to the new contract, the new lease contract.
Well, it's an old item.
Sure.
And I guess it's up to the council, right? You could maybe deny this if that's what you want, approve the resolution and then tell me to follow the new rate.
I got you. Well, let's ask this. We know what the new rate is. If this was, or we know what the rate is now, if this was to be the new rate, what would he be at? It was like, I think I did the math, it was like 200 and some?
No, it would be more than that because he would be, I don't, I think it's going to be 330 some dollars per year. It would be the 2250 times .15.
I gotta calculate it here. If that's approved, obviously.
If that's approved.
That's a 337.
Yep, 337.50.
Okay. I guess he's, if we approve this, he's kind of skirting in right, literally at the last second before everybody else's leases go up. I guess.
Somebody is at some point, right?
My, yeah, right. My only thought is, I, I think the, I think the price is fair since we already told the price, my opinion is. I think though the 10 years probably needs to be shortened before we can adjust that. I guess that's, that's my two cents. I don't know if any other council members think on that? Counselor Januine, your question?
I, I think that because he, this negotiation already started, he already signed it. He, he was expecting this one thing and it was through this process that we discovered that there was an area that we might want to address. Like, I think we should continue, not change what he has signed. And, and I would actually move that we do approve it as it is here and then the future, the, the future leases would go under the new.
Under the new terms.
Yes.
There's a, there's a motion on the table to accept it as written by Counselor Januine and second by Counselor Holland. Any other discussion on it? Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, new business, furniture zone lease for Lot A from Cafe Brulee, 24 West Main Street.
Thank you. So Monica Iverson submitted an application for this furniture zone use permit application. This is for Lot A, which is in front of 24 West Main Street. Their plan is to set up six tables in the area with proper rubbish containers and stanchions. The police chief report indicated that there were no incidents in the previous lease of this lot. Cafe Brulee has paid the annual $35 fee and the city council is asked to approve or deny the sidewalk furniture use zone lease for Cafe Brulee.
Thank you, Katie. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Motions? Counselor Price?
It's essentially the same as last year, right? There's no difference to it. I'd move approval.
Motion approved by Counselor Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cheeseman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next up, same thing, furniture zone lease for docks at 9 West Main.
Thank you. So Garner Hanson submitted a sidewalk furniture zone use permit for docks. He asked for Lot Lee C, which is adjacent to 9 West Main Street. They plan to set up four tables in this area with proper rubbish containers and stanchions. The applicant has submitted a crowd management plan and the plan has been reviewed by the police department. The police chief reported that there's no disqualifying events in this, in his criminal history and recommended the issuance of the license. Garner had also requested Lot D, but due to the distance from his business, the city ordinance does not allow him to rent this location. Photos of the locations and measurements were attached. Docks has paid the annual $35 fee and the city council is asked to approve or deny the sidewalk furniture use zone lease for docks at Lot C.
Thank you, Katie. Any other visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for, you got to, please sir, come up to the podium and?
Yeah, hi. Thanks for seeing me, guys. And so, yeah, we were trying to.
Real quick, sorry Garner, just state your name and address for the record.
Oh, Garner Hanson, docks bar of Vermillion. We, we really liked the lot right out in front of us, like the one that Katie just talked about, Lot C, I think. And then the other one, which is just a little bit farther down, we were looking to try to get that one, but looking at how they explained it to me after we kind of talked through it because where I measured, it looked close enough. And then where they told me they were measuring too, it was the same measurement, they just went six feet farther. What I didn't realize there was like a, a planned walkway there because where the, where you walk, where that's at, it just goes straight out into the street. So it's not really a crosswalk per se. And so I was just wondering if you guys would consider letting me have that bigger space because we were maybe trying to plan to do like a, I don't know, like a summer beanbag league that you could have in a bigger space like that, but you know, just do some fun for the community. And, and then, and then when we weren't doing that league, then we just have more tables and chairs out there for people to enjoy, so. Because the, the two spots where they do walk, they just go straight out into, into the street. So it's not really a crosswalk area. So it's just kind of, I don't know. When I looked at it, I thought the whole area came, but I was corrected on that. Katie corrected me on that, but I was just going to see if there was, I don't know, if you guys would consider it. Never hurts to ask.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Is there any questions for Mr. Hanson at all by the council? Counselor Cheeseman?
So does the, does the property that you want infringe on any other business at all?
Uh, does it infringe any other businesses?
Yeah.
No, it would have just been Murfs and I talked to Mike and he's, yeah, he's like, yeah, that's great. Sounds good to me. He's, we already got a letter from him, so.
Let me ask you this, Katie. So in looking at the map, there's three eating establishments there, Brick House Pub and Holler. And you serve food, correct?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
Area, obviously Brick House already has outdoor seating. And, and I understand the 50-foot thing. My initial, just taking a look at it, C would obviously be a lot closer to Pub and so if Pub happened to apply to this beforehand and they got C, he wouldn't have an option for D, is that what we're seeing?
Correct.
So if now Pub came to us later because he's already applied for C, they wouldn't have any option because D's too far away from them?
And I'm not sure if there's one in the other direction. I don't think.
No, there isn't. Any other discussion by council at all on this? Questions? Counselor Price?
I think it's for Jose. How did we decide on the 50 feet? Is it based on anything like block length or other, what other cities do? Or was it just a number we picked because it was easy?
I honestly can't remember if it was that because it was easy. I thought it had to do something with the fact that we didn't want a server with alcohol going too far from the establishment. I, I, I honestly can't remember. We did model it after, I think Sioux Falls, if I remember correctly. And Sioux Falls had a similar distance, if I remember correctly again.
Let me, let me ask another question too. Is, according to the ordinance, is something like beanbags allowed per? Something like that or does it have to be a furniture zone set sitting there kind of thing? Is there an?
It doesn't specifically say anything about that.
So it wouldn't be not allowed is what I'm asking. Okay. Counselor Januine?
I was just going to address Catherine's question. I was looking back at our history on this and I know that we started with 20 and through our discussion, we moved it up to 50, but I don't remember why that was the number that we settled on either.
And, and looking at this, I think the map or the, the notes here say 52 feet. Is that what it is? So we're talking difference of two feet? You're wanting C and D or would you just prefer D without C? Let me ask you this.
Well, no, I mean, from my understanding, nobody was using either one and they haven't in the past. So I thought, well, if the space is available to use, we might as well use it.
My only concern, the reason why I ask is even if we were to grant two of them, now that, that's two spaces and every other entity here.
Right.
You know, has only access to one.
Sure.
Especially if the Pub was to say, hey, we wanted one, right?
Sure.
That'd be my only concern. However, in looking at the way that the space is, I don't see any establishment being able to use D the way it's set up right now. Any restaurant eating establishments. The ones that are sitting on that corner, I believe is a hair salon. You have Murfs. I don't know of anything else that would be able to, that would utilize a furniture space for those businesses. I mean, unless, you know, if the council. I mean, unless, you know, if Council Mur is going to get his hair done outside.
Sure.
Or it depends on what goes in on that other space as well. I know there's an empty, a vacated space there where the old treasure drill was. Yeah. So I guess there is that though too. Council Cheeseman?
So has the pub ever applied for this at all?
Katie?
Not since I've been here, no.
So it's probably not likely that they're going to do it again?
Well, they never have, so it wouldn't be again.
Oh. Point taken. So the chances of them asking this time probably aren't likely?
I, I can't speak for them, but I would assume that they wouldn't.
They aren't here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's like Jim.
Uh, Jim wants to speak. Is there unanimous consent from the council? Okay, go ahead, Jim.
I just wanted to, you said you were talking about the pub.
Jim Peterson, Ramon Chamber. They're not serving food at this time or open for food.
Thank you, just.
As far as I know, they don't have a plan to do it.
Sure, sure. Um, I guess the only thing is, in order to deviate this, I don't, I don't think we have the authority. Do we have the authority to deviate from an ordinance?
Look at the gentleman in blue over there.
Time to earn your pay.
You do, but it's not advisable.
Okay.
You can, I, I always start from the proposition, if you have an ordinance, enforce it and enforce it uniformly or repeal it. Um, so.
Understand.
Again, could you?
Could you amend the ordinance, I suppose?
Sure.
Increase the distance, but this, you know, I guess if the measuring's all right. To me, the important part is in that bottom line where they indemnify the city for, if, you know, because it's happening on city property, that that's the important part to me. The rest of this is policy.
Sure.
So.
Council General, you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have one, Rich?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so. Still applies. I listened to him. Between, there's that walkway between C and D, is that correct? Or space?
Which, which space?
That's what I'm asking. C and D, is it between the two?
Between C and D is probably the crosswalk.
Yep, so there's, there's a, there's a crosswalk here between C and the planter. There's a planter there. Between D and the planter, there's, there's a seating area. There's actually a built bench for that planter.
So they're physically fairly wide apart between C and D then?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they're going to be playing uh.
Yeah, no.
They're not going to be playing anything between that because there's, there's plantings in there. So.
Well, and I will clarify, that's one thing that I wasn't aware of. I thought like when on D, where that's at, I thought that uh, I didn't know that there was a six-foot walkway on either side. I really thought it was the whole space and that's why we had come up with a different measurement from the door when we really hadn't because, I don't know if you guys can see this, but wait here, let me see your pencil. Yeah, I measured right there and he measured right there. So that's why it's a little bit off. So when you're talking about changing an ordinance, I mean, you could look at this another way. You could just say, okay, well, we're not going to change the ordinance. We're just going to change where we measure it too. So there's.
Yeah.
So. But because, because I don't know.
Council?
It, it really kind of depends on whether or not you think that this is a, that's a walkway or not and that you need that space in there. Because for, for us, we would want to do beanbags and if we're going to do beanbags.
Hold on, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hanson, let's.
Sure.
Council has a discussion right now. If they have a question, will the, Council Price?
I have a question and then I have a suggestion. So my question is, the ordinance as we wrote it is mostly about like food service, right?
Food and liquor.
Food and beverage service, right? So we don't, we never, I don't remember in the ordinance if we ever really talked about other non-food related use of spaces like beanbags, like, you know, chalk, the, in front of the, the count spoon, they do chalk on the side, you know, like other things that aren't food related. And so I wonder if it would be, and if the fifty feet that we came up with was just kind of like, this seems like a reasonable number, but it wasn't actually going out and seeing how does that actually relate to the actual spaces we have out there and how far they are from the businesses that would potentially use them. I think it might be good if we went back and looked at that ordinance and see, does it, are there other businesses or establishments that maybe are just a hair away from being able to utilize a space? Would it be good if we raised the, the cap to fifty-five or whatever to allow this and other businesses to be able to use it as much as possible? Um, and do we want to look at the ordinance and see if we want to make other, other distinctions between food and beverage service? We want within a certain distance so the servers don't have to carry it too far from the business. But then other sort of non-food and beverage activities, maybe there's a reasonable, a further reasonable distance that makes sense. I think those would be good things if we wanted to look at the ordinance and look at amending it, but given that it's not really a good idea for us to violate our own ordinance, I think um, this is a great idea and we want to encourage this in our community for sure, is people eating outside and businesses being successful and selling their wares, but I think we should approve C right now and they'll look at a longer term solution for other businesses that might be in the situation of how to utilize something like D. So I would move approval of, it's how it's written, right, with just C, to move approval of what's before us.
Okay. I have a, a motion to approve how it's written with area C. I'm going to ask for a second and we'll do more discussion. Is there a second to that? Second by Council Holland. Is there more discussion on this?
I've got one question.
Council Tallar?
Are you good with if we do the, the C tonight and then we kind of promise to double back and maybe look at D down the road for you?
Yeah, I kind of figured that was going to happen anyway. So yeah, that's not a problem. I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm just.
Hold on one second, sorry. So John brought up a good point. We have a motion on the floor, so in order to bring him back, we have to get unanimous consent.
Sorry, sorry if I jumped back.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Is there unanimous consent for, Mr. Tallar to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I think he answered it.
I do have one question for Katie. Does a furniture zone, is there anything in law or the ordinance, if he was to set up beanbags on his own, not putting furniture out there, can or any Joe citizen set up beanbags in that area for, to play bags for a couple hours if they wanted to?
So I think that person has no control over them then. So if you, you could not have to be a customer of Business X. Business X couldn't tell you you couldn't use them. They basically are for public use then. Same as if he were, any business were to put chairs out there, you couldn't say that you couldn't sit there because they don't have, unless I'm wrong, Mr. Okay, that they have, Mr. Jesse, if they have exclusive use of it, it's public domain then. And so if somebody walked off with them.
Well, that'd be different.
You have to be careful how that works.
Yeah. But, and then of course they couldn't have the beverages there because that's a public area, a public access area.
Yep.
But it wouldn't be much different than setting up bags somewhere else on a public access, correct?
Right.
Okay. Motion on the, on the table. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All who's in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion carries. We'll revisit that ordinance and take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Garner. Uh, next item we have is a permit for the consumption but not sale of alcoholic beverages for the farmer's market, local fair at the fair on August seventh. Nick?
Um, Grace Freeman on behalf of Vermillion Area Farmer's Market has requested a permit to consume alcoholic beverages on public property for sampling of local beer and wine at the local fair at the fair event. Uh, the event will be held on Thursday, August seventh, twenty twenty-five from four to six P M. At the Clay County Fairgrounds in Clover Hall. A copy of the application is attached. State statute provides that governing bodies of the municipality may permit the consumption but not the sale of any alcoholic beverages on property owned by the public. City council may permit the consumption but not the sale of alcoholic beverages on property owned by the public. This is city property that is leased to Clay County for the fairgrounds. Administration recommends approval of the permit to allow the consumption but not the sale of alcoholic beverages for the local fair at the fair sampling event requested by the Vermillion Area Farmer's Market on Thursday, August seventh, twenty twenty-five from four to six P M. at the Clay County Fairgrounds in Clover Hall.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion? Motion? Motion approved by Council General and second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Motion carries. Next item we have is a resolution to adjust the wastewater rates.
Thank you. So annually, we adjust the wastewater rates um using the average monthly consumption base um in January, February, and March. We do this each year because consumption per each rental unit could change. Therefore, um, sorry, therefore we do it annually um to make it fair for the community. The wastewater rates were adj, last adjusted in April of twenty-four to a hundred and forty-two percent. Um, as wastewater rates are based on water billing rates, it should be noted that the last time we increased water rates was in January of twenty twenty-four. The wastewater billing rate will need to be increased to a hundred and seventy percent to meet the requirements of the adopted budget and to develop the revenue needed for the upcoming wastewater treatment plan renovation. The average wastewater increase is nineteen point seven two percent with all factors taken into consideration. Additional increases will need to be, need to happen in April of twenty twenty-five to have a rate structure in place to service the upcoming debt um for the renovation work. Um, administration recommends adjusting the wastewater um charge to a hundred and seventy percent, which will increase the monthly billing by nineteen point seven two percent or in, from forty-three dollars and ninety cents to fifty-two fifty-six for an average use of four thousand three hundred and forty-seven gallons. Um, which is a total increase of eight dollars and sixty-six cents for the average user. Administration recommends the adoption of the wastewater resolution.
Thank you, Katie. Visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Discussion by council. Katie, I just want to note, I don't think you mentioned it here in the memo, the five million E D A grant, we're going to wait till after the bids before this would take effect. Is that correct?
Yes, that's why we're waiting till August to um get the bids in and to finalize everything to know actual numbers.
And my other question is, is this granted jeopardy at all? Because it's the federal grant?
Um, not that we're aware of. We, we have already signed into the um, into the E D A grant, so I, I believe that we will still get it. John would know more about that.
We, we have a signed grant agreement. It was probably done last July or August is my guess. And quarterly, we do updates uh at, to E D A of activities that have taken place. So we're better than some other grants in that we have a signed grant agreement and we're in their, their portal a couple times of having crossed different quarterly thresholds, the most recent one being last week with the end of March. So um, I think we're in a much better position than some other grants which have been awarded, but no grant agreement has been signed.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion by council? Your motions?
I'll move approval.
Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second? Second by Council Lieber. Any other discussion? Council Cheeseman?
So what happens then if the grant does get frozen?
I, I think that'll be one of the questions that would come back to the council. We've, um, we've had no indications of that. Um, but as we go out for bid on the project, I guess there's certain aspects that need to happen now. Um.
When we applied for this grant, the state told us that they need, that we needed to increase our rates thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per, per every individual that has wastewater. So um, that is the worst case scenario, worst case scenario. So with this grant, that could just go further down. But I think the worst case scenario for us is thirty-one twenty-five for every user.
Is that monthly?
Yes.
Council Tallar?
And then let's say worst case scenario, we go up that thirty-one twenty-five. This ten dollars or eleven dollars, whatever it is here, would be a piece of that. So an additional twenty-one in worst case scenario down the road?
Yes.
When's completion of the wastewater?
It's a two-year project, if I remember correctly, and the debt, twenty or thirty years, thirty-year debt on it, so. It's roughly a twenty million dollar project is our estimate and about three million dollars of engineering, so it's twenty-three million dollars worth of improvements for the wastewater treatment plant.
So a ten-dollar increase annually for the next couple of years would probably get us there anyway?
Well.
Before we can accept any grant money, I have to increase it.
We've got to get there anyway.
Yeah.
Yep.
So a couple of small steps instead of one big one?
I think that's why Katie proposed this one now and then the one in August when hopefully we'll uh, with the track that we have right now, the bid would have been placed out. We would have received bids and you would have awarded a bid. And then once we know that number, we'll know exactly the debt service that we're going to have and what we need to cover that.
To answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other discussion by council? There's a motion on the table. If no other discussion, all who's in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion carries. Next item uh we'll have is a final plot uh for the Madison Park Edition. Jose will read off the legal description for us. I'm kidding.
It's pretty short. Uh, there is a picture on this one, just in case you were wondering. Uh, but Stockwell Engineers submitted a final plat for Block Three, Madison Park Edition on behalf of the owner, Stencil Group. Uh, the property is located on the south side of Roseville Street. Uh, for reference, uh, this would be Cherry, Crawford, North Norbeck, and Roseville Street, which is built all the way up to here. Uh, this portion of the Roseville Street right of way was dedicated with a previous plat. Uh, and this half right of way of Mickelson again was dedicated with a previous plat. Uh, as I was mentioning, uh, this parcel that's being platted or considered tonight, uh, is roughly eight point four acres. Uh, it's bordered to the north by Roseville, uh, to the, to the west by a couple apartment complexes, to the east by the right of way, uh, half the right of way from Mickelson and to the south by a farm field currently. Um, staff reviewed the final plat and found that it complies with the city's ordinance regarding plaits. All of the uh, eastments will be dedicated with a plat and all the required right of way half or has already been dedicated with the previous plating. Uh, this item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their March twenty-fourth meeting. At that meeting, uh, the commission considered uh, or uh, answered several questions regarding uh, future uh, uses within the area, uh, future street extensions and uh, the use of the land to the east, which uh, when they were discussing, they were talking about this parcel here, that rectangular tract of land. After a brief discussion, uh, the commission recommended seven to zero, uh, that the city council approve the plat as presented. Uh, staff in the city's planning and zoning commission recommend the city council approve the final plat as proposed.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion? Council General?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so I was looking at the, at Google Maps earlier and I have a question about Mickelson. Is that not in line with the, directly in line with the current?
It is not in line.
Okay, that explains it because I thought we were talking about a smaller plot until I saw these maps.
I would say Mickelson is actually somewhere in here if you were to be extending it. Sorry, somewhere in here if you were to extend it all the way north. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion? Motion approved by Council Mur. Is there a second? Second by Council Tallar. Any other discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Motion carries. Next item we have is the lease agreement for the hangar land.
Yep, so uh, the city has been leasing land at the airport since uh, the seventies essentially. Uh, at this point, the leases that we have currently vary uh, from ten dollars uh, to a little bit over seven hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. Uh, uh, and the leases tend to extend for a very period of time. Some of them are ten years, uh, like the one that you guys just approved. Uh, and other ones are twenty years. All of them have multiple uh, years or multiple times that they can be renewed. For example, the twenty-year leases uh, were actually on the third renewal. Um, and when that one's done, then we'll be able to hopefully charge more than uh, than the ten dollars, I believe, that we charged on that one. But regardless, um, from the seventies that the city has been charging. But regardless, um, from the seventies that the city has been charging leases at, at the, for the hangar land at the airport, uh, at the time, it was, it started between five to ten dollars per lease. Uh, irrelevant of the size of the land that was being leased. Uh, in two thousand and one, the rate was changed to five cents per square foot. Uh, again, it didn't matter if it was empty land or, uh, land with a hangar or so forth. Uh, and then in two thousand and twelve, staff looked at the rates again and, uh, we amended them with the council's guidance, uh, to, uh, to cover some of the costs and also to dissuade hangar users to have a large empty parcel with a tiny little hangar. We actually had that instance at the airport at a couple of locations and we wanted to, to make sure that that didn't happen in the future. Uh, so what we ended up doing, uh, council's request was, uh, to contact, um, all of, we actually contacted all of the medium-sized airports or general aviation airports and we also contacted all the large, uh, general aviation airports in the state. Thankfully, South Dakota is not very big population-wise. Because it would have been pretty bad.
You would have been fine at ten or twelve.
But, but I, I broke it up based on the general media, general avia, or medium general aviation and large, uh, general aviation. Uh, for the medium size, uh, we contacted all of those that you see listed there and they do, uh, range in population size from, you know, you have Sturgis, Hot Springs, uh, you have Anida, Gregory, Kettlesburg. Vermillion is actually classified as a medium, uh, general aviation airport and that's based on the number of, uh, takeoff and takeoffs and landings. Uh, but once I contacted all of these, uh, we found out that their range was very, uh, large. Uh, you had some of them, like Anida was charges, uh, four cents, uh, per square foot, uh, to, uh, Hot Springs and Brighton that charged that fifteen cents a square foot, uh, for the land being leased. Uh, out of those medium ones, uh, I do have the average high and the low there. Uh, for the generally, large general aviation airports, now we get into bigger cities. So you have, uh, Yankton, Brookings, Spearfish, and, uh, T is actually not owned by the city. It's owned by the, by Lincoln County. Uh, but those, uh, we contacted, uh, and these are the responses that we got. We have Yankton, which has, uh, been charging ten cents, uh, per square foot for decades. Uh, and that's, that's the way they explained that they are not looking into changing them. Uh, as far as the leases, they're essentially, once you sign a lease, uh, you can just stay with the airport for, forever. It's just, uh, an automatic renewal, it seemed like, after ten years. Uh, and you have T, on the other hand, uh, where they have no room, uh, for any more private hangars and they're actually in the same process as we are, uh, or as we just were, where they're actually doing a, uh, a survey, uh, to see if their lease rates are comparable, uh, to other communities. And there you have the, the charges as far as the average high and low. Uh, I did, uh, combine all of them and average for all of them are twelve cents. Um, we are proposing, or staff is proposing, I guess, uh, to have the, the rate be adjusted to fifteen, fifteen cents per square foot, uh, regardless if it's, uh, empty or hangar or constructed on, it's just gonna be a flat fifteen cents. And that this rate would be reviewed by staff every five years. So it, it wasn't, if, if, if it was misunderstood, it wasn't my intention, but we weren't saying, I guess I wasn't implying that the agreement would be amended, uh, that you might have with each individual property or hangar owner every five years, it's just that their rates would be reviewed by staff and by the city council every five years. But that's the information that I have. I don't know if you're, you guys have any other questions?
Thank you. Jose, any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion?
That does make more sense now, thank you, after you described that in the five years.
Council Cheeseman?
So where does the revenue from this go? This, I mean, the revenue is so small.
Wastewater.
It's gonna need three hundred years to pay the loan. No, but, uh, the, the revenue that's collected, it, it is pretty miniscule at this point. I'm gonna, I wanna say it's probably about maybe thirty-five hundred dollars or so a year that we collect from all of the.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred, uh, that we collect from all of the air, the hangars at the airport. That revenue then goes into the airport fund to try and offset some of the costs associated with it. FAA would like us to be, or the airport to be completely independent from any money required by the city. But we, we're just not to that size where we can be completely self-sufficient, so.
So it's really not, I guess I'm having trouble understanding the reason why we would raise it. If you could enlighten me.
I mean, the reason why, the airport does actually offer quite a few amenities to the users at this point. We do have a courtesy car that's, uh, completely, it's paid for by the city uh, and it's utilized for free, uh, by whoever goes to the airport and needs a, a courtesy car. We also have, uh, Jet A Fuel, uh, that's available to anybody, whether they have a hangar or not at the airport. Uh, that's also paid by the city. Uh, we also offered, uh, uh, just, uh, general aviation fuel, which again is available to anybody that uses the airport. We have, uh, we have a tie-down service, uh, for anybody that wants to utilize the airport. Um, we also have a tug that's available to anybody that needs to, uh, if you have a, a jet, uh, plane, then we actually have a tiny little tug that will pull the, the jet into a hangar space or into an apron space or whatever. We do have a terminal building, uh, that offers, uh, twenty-four, seven bathrooms, uh, available to the, to the aviation public. Uh, we have, uh, the ability or the, uh, amenities within that terminal building for people to be able to rest if they're tired. Uh, there's a couple, uh, big, pretty comfortable lazy boys. Uh, there's a computer in there. So there's amenities that other, uh, smaller airports might not even offer or have. Uh, and I know that most of these, uh, airports, at least in the medium, uh, general aviation category, do not offer some of the, the amenities that we do have. So there are, there's quite a lot of amenities. And most importantly, we actually have an airport manager. And that individual, uh, he, he spends, this is his heart and soul essentially. So he spends a lot of time at the airport and he does, uh, make sure that everything is taken care of, all the grass is mowed and everything is tip-top for the visiting public.
Does he earn a salary?
Uh, he does. It's very small, but yes, he does earn a salary.
One of the things I just want to take note, you mentioned bathrooms. Last I recall this winter, we had an issue with frozen pipes. Would this help go towards the cost? Because eventually those are gonna have to be addressed, correct?
Yep, so this money would go into some of those, uh, that costs. It's gonna be minimal, but yeah, it would, we would use, this money that's generated, we use for pretty much everything, from buying fuel to fixing that stuff.
And I don't wanna go down too down, far down that path, but just a synopsis, like the frozen pipes issue obviously takes down the bathrooms for a little period of time. So the people coming and going from the airport, which, shockingly, I'm surprised how much traffic we do have coming and going from our airport. What exactly is, is wrong or entailed or just a brief synopsis?
So typically, we have snow on the ground, uh, and the snow acts as an insulator. Uh, without the snow, uh, the pipes, some of the sections of the pipe froze. So what we're gonna do this year, in the summer anyways, is that we're just gonna be putting insulation, uh, foam boards, um, on the side on top of it and that should take care of it.
Okay. Any discussion by the council? Any motions? Motion approved by Council Holland.
Second.
Second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Next item, uh, via Civic Rec Recreation, point-of-sale software purchase. Jim?
Up until two thousand and fifteen, Vermillion Parks and Recreation relied on a traditional in-person registration system for registration for all programs, especially the summer recreation programs. The system was outdated, inconvenient, and demanded a lot of staff time. In two thousand and fifteen, Vermillion Parks and Recreation transitioned to an online registration system from the active network. This software was user-friendly, allowed for any time-of-day registrations, and accepted debit and credit card payments. Despite the benefits of the active network, limita, had several limitations. It lacked a facility scheduling feature, offered limited communications with its users, and had poor technical support for the administrative end. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Vermillion Recreation Department began exploring other software options um, that included a scheduling facility software, um, a point-of-sale system, and, uh, but it was delayed because of the budget restraints at that time. So we left it kind of sit for a few years. This year, it kind of came up again, that we ran into some issues with the point-of-sale system that we needed over at the, uh, pool that would help with the, the finance department and just kind of keeping track of things. So again, we looked at Civic Rec. Active Network and Civic Rec both use a transaction fee to cover their costs. Basic example would be if, if the program's a hundred dollars, we would take a hundred dollars from the, from the user, active would send back roughly ninety-four dollars to it. And so that's how they made their basic money. Civic Rec works in the same manner, except they also include an annual maintenance fee. Uh, that annual maintenance fee is included for the point-of-sale, um, security software and, uh, and enhanced communication for the users. Uh, basically to keep, uh, to be able to use text messaging and other, um, direct messaging to the consumer. Um, the reason why we're looking at that again includes the direct messaging or the, uh, participation, um, enhanced software so that we could get a hold of the public a little bit quicker. And the biggest problem that we've run into is swim lessons that they get canceled or postponed because of pool issues or weather-related, same with league games and sports activities at nights. The only way we could do it in the past was an email system and that was, um, inconvenient for the users on that end. Uh, in addition, as I mentioned, a point-of-sale system that would be beneficial for both us at the, on the recreation side and for the folks over in finance. Um, also a lot of us to do some membership card printing, in which we never had the capability of before. Um, so there's some, some features to it that we really would like to see and have um, for customer service and for user-friendliness on our end. Uh, the cost of the Civic Rec for all the hardware, all the training, everything that would be included would be eight thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars, um, for the initial investment, uh, with an additional thirty-two hundred, roughly, dollars for an annual fee. That includes the fee that they take off the transaction fee, but an additional fee of thirty-two, forty for each annual payment. The initial purchase will be funded from the Parks Capital Line and the annual operating fees will be budgeted from the professional service line in the recreation budget. The budget for both of these would need to be amended or revised to account for this expenditure. Administration recommends the approval of the new recreation software from Civic Rec for eight thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars at this time. Any questions I can have or answer for you folks?
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing that, uh, move to council for discussion? Katie, how are we setting the budget? I know we already told Jimmy to advise it, revise it once today.
I mean, I think he's within budget right now, as of April.
Is, we ask, especially as we're on budget talks, with the new, uh, laws passed, the reference to the property tax cap and all that, are we gonna get a big hit from that in our budget, do we foresee?
I have not calculated that yet, so I'm not sure.
Go ahead, John.
Jim, do you want to give a little background? So he's talking about using the Parks Capital Fund, which is not a property tax or sales tax-funded account. It comes from some contributions that we get. You wanna?
Contributions, yes, um, for example, Vermillion Baseball, uh, will pay us a, a set number of fee, um, a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars per season and then a dollar per player. That's where those funds go into. Uh, another thing that went in there, when we signed agreements with, um, Pepsi, for example, at Prentice Plunge, the last time we did a, a contract with, uh, Pepsi, they offered a thirteen thousand dollar, thank you for signing up for Pepsi, for a seven-year agreement. That money went in there. Um, that line is also used for, I think the Bliss money went in there. We use it kind of as a placeholder, then we use it out of there to pay for. A, a donation for the Bliss Playground went in there and we paid for it out of that fund as well. So kind of a holding space a little bit for that, as well as some user fees and some contributions that go in there.
So if there's a pickleball league and you put a fee on there, that could go into this too?
Uh, it could. Typically, if it's run by the Recreation Department, it would go back to the recreation side, back in the general.
Edison Vision, you tie it to pickleball, people will come up with the money, it seems like, race funds.
That could be, yes.
Council Cheeseman?
So based on the discussion we had this afternoon, is, is the golf course gonna be tied into this too?
Uh, no, this is a different, completely different, uh, Civic Rec doesn't have the online tee times that the, uh, software reg, software programs that the golf course uses for the online tee times. So it's just a, it's a different animal. That's a good question.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Any motions? Motion approved by Council Lieber, second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All say nay. Motion carries. I almost broke my gavel. Next item, the revenue lease agreement with Vertical Bridge for a commercial tower land over at the recycling center.
Thank you. So talking about leases, some more here. Um, in September of two thousand, the city entered into an agreement with the Brookings Municipal Utility to Lease Property that is known as the Recycling Center at eight forty North Crawford Road. On October twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two, the lease was then transferred to Vertical Bridge. Vertical Bridge has reached out to the city staff to discuss a renewal for the current agreement that's, um, that starts after November eleventh of two thousand and thirty. They have asked to, um, start this renewal this soon because, um, they are trying to acquire with AT&T and Verizon a new lease with them so that they can attach their equipment to this tower. Um, there were three major changes that have happened to this lease. The first would be the rent. We did adjust it currently. The rent is five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents. Um, for each five-year term, it went up. So the first, first term would be six twenty-five, the second of seven hundred, seven seventy-five, eight seventy-five, and then finally nine seventy-five. The second amendment, um, would be to allow the city to terminate the lease if the Recycling Center wanted to expand in the future. Finally, language was also added for confidentiality, a confidentiality section to allow the city to comply with, um, South Dakota, South Dakota codified law. Um, all rent payments are received into the Joint Powers Fund and administration recommends the city council consider the approval of the revenue lease with Vertical Bridge.
Thank you, Katie. Any, uh, visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Any motions?
Just a question.
Question?
They're asking for thirty years out and they've already set the price for thirty years out. It just seems that we may get the short end of the stick on that one.
So we actually set those prices. Staff, um, went through and I can't remember what the current lease says, but we went off of that and then we rounded it up to the next, um, was it fifty dollars?
Next twenty-five or fifty dollars.
Yeah, something like that. Um, so staff did, was the one that recommended these prices.
I just think when you're talking thirty years from now, man, who knows what's gonna happen with the economy and everything else and where, that, that may be too high, but it may be really cheap too. So I just question the.
Are they requesting a thirty-year lease or they?
Yes, they say that typically these lease, these types of leases are thirty years. We have, um, two, well, one other one, one terminated this year, and then we have another lease that's also for thirty years also. Over by the, I think, the airport, isn't it?
Oh, we have one over east of town.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't remember where the other one's at, but we do have two active ones.
Any other discussion? Any motions? Motion approved by Council General. Is there a second? Second by Council Mur. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor to approve the lease signify by saying aye. All say nay. Motion carries. Next item will be a two thousand and twenty-four unaudited annual financial report.
Thank you. Um, the annual financial report is required to be presented to, to the city council no later than the first regular meeting of May. The report as presented is unaudited and contains only the financial section. For the annual, um, audit, the introductory, M D N A, footnotes, and stat section will contain, will be. will contain, will be contained in the comprehensive annual financial report. And that will also be audited by Williamson Company. Upon acknowledgement of receipt by the city council, the required exhibits will be published and filed with the Department of Legislative Audit. In the past, there have been questions about what is included in the report. So I did attach a lengthy explanation of what each of the statements includes and how it affects the city. The cost will be for publication of the acknowledgement, and admin recommends the city council acknowledge this unaudited report.
Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Councilor Cheeseman, this was your homework, remember?
I read half of it, took a cold shower, came back and read the other half.
Is that a motion to accept it?
Move to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report by Councilor Price, is there a second? Second by Councilor Genoine, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next item, declare two pieces of fire and EMS equipment as surplus to consider a resolution to transfer to the Gaville South Dakota Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor. With each budget, your equipment is replaced in a rotation to maintain the latest equipment necessary to effectively and safely perform our jobs. The equipment before the city council will be considered for declaration as surplus at this time, consists of a two thousand and eleven Stryker Power Pro XT ambulance cot and a nineteen eighty-two hose washer. The two thousand and eleven Stryker Power Pro XT cot is an ambulance stretcher that was replaced a while ago, but the cot was kept as a reserve unit. The device is currently broken, needs to be disposed of as it's inoperable. We do not need to keep a reserve cot any longer as our service agreements allow us access to loner units if needed. The nineteen eighty-two hose washer is being replaced due to age but is still in working order. Staff requests that the city council allow it to be transferred to another fire department in the state of South Dakota for continued use. Gaville Fire Rescue from Gaville, South Dakota has inquired about the unit that is available. South Dakota Codified Law listed below allows the transfer of said equipment to another agency within the state of South Dakota. Discussion, the city council need to approve the surplus of the above equipment and the transfer of the hose washer to another agency as mentioned. There's no fight in annual consideration at this time. And administration recommends declaring the above listed equipment items as surplus and adopting the resolution authorizing the transfer of the nineteen eighty-two hose washer to Gaville Fire Rescue in Gaville, South Dakota.
Thank you, Chief Callahan, is there any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Councilor Cheeseman?
So this is a goodwill gesture, we're just giving to them, is that?
Yeah, we would be transferring it to them and for no cost.
This is pretty common, right?
Yeah.
For transferring equipment, that's what I thought.
Move about our friends in Gaville.
Motion approved by Councilor Price, is there a second? Second by Councilor Genoine, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is for bid openings, we have field quotes, Katie?
We received two bids for the April field quotes. New Century F S was the winner of the low bids. For item number one, they came in at two dollars and sixty-nine-nine. Item two is two dollars nine, ninety-one-nine. Item three is two dollars fifty-three-nine, and item four, two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Thank you, Katie, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council?
Move approval of the low bids.
Motion approved of the low bid by Councilor Price, is there a second? Second by Councilor Cheeseman, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries, next item will be city manager's report.
Thank you, a couple of upcoming meetings before your next city council meeting on April twenty-first. The city's Historic Preservation Commission has their monthly meeting this Wednesday, the ninth, at nine AM in the Pol conference room here at City Hall. The library board meets on Wednesday, the sixteenth, at six o'clock in the Cozak Room at the library. And just a reminder, there's a special meeting with the Clay County Commission at five o'clock on Tuesday, April fifteenth. It is here in the city council chambers, and that's to hear an appeal of the Clay County zoning administrator's decision regarding a concentrated animal feeding operation on land located at approximately seventeen hundred West Main Street. Then also, the two governing bodies will be discussing the continuation of J J Z A in general. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a meeting next Monday, the fourteenth, at five thirty PM. They have two items on their agenda that we know of right now. One is related to the plat of block three that you approved earlier this evening, and heard a little bit about this at noon. And that's the creation of a tax increment financing district, it'd be number eleven for that lot, number three of Madison Park Edition. The, this would be, the city council then would consider the boundaries for this TIF district at your next meeting on April twenty-first. The second item in the Planning and Zoning Commission is a rezoning for lot three, block two of Aroba Edition, and that rezoning request is from N R C to R two. And that's on the east side, or east side of the community and north-hand side of East Main Street, addressed as twenty-five thirty-two East Main Street. Just a reminder that we are accepting expression of interest forms. We have two openings on the library board and three openings on our Human Relations Commission. We ask that those be submitted by five o'clock on April twenty-fourth. And then we anticipate the city council will make appointments at your May fifth city council meeting. Just a reminder, the online, the annual online ten percent off sale for Prentice Plunge seasons and passes is this coming weekend on Saturday and Sunday. And enclosed in the packet was a raffle notification from Dakota Hospital Foundation. This is an event that already took place on April second, but they sold five-dollar raffle tickets at their Evening for Women event. The prizes were baskets valued at three hundred dollars, and the proceeds from that raffle went to support the work of the Dakota Hospital Foundation.
Thank you, John. Next item we have is invoices payable. Does anyone have a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions?
So that came up on a previous item, number thirty-five, that's Dennis Martin's, he is the airport manager. So that is his monthly contract that he has with us.
Number twelve, Katie, what is that?
The Berkshire.
It's the number of the.
Oh, jeez. Katie?
Which number now?
Twelve.
I believe that's parts Berkshire.
No.
It's be for moving costs.
That is a.
Oh, am I looking at the wrong?
Number twelve is for a police officer candidate that, as part of the package, we paid some costs for him to relocate to Vermillion from out of state.
Is that part of our incentives for hiring now?
It was in this particular scenario, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Move repair bills?
Motion to pay the bills by Councilor Price, is there a second? Second by Councilor Genoine, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries, we have no consensus agenda, so there's nothing else but a motion to adjourn. Motion by Murrah, second by Councilor Lieber, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Good night. Go watch some basketball.